It's 6:01, I'll call the meeting to order if you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening we have Reverend Nelson.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Tim, I want to thank both of you actually because you're the reason I'm here. My name is Pastor Ted Nelson. Our church is new to Allen Park and I kind of honor and the privilege to be here. So, the prayer for tonight. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day and for the privilege of serving this community. We ask for your guidance and blessings as we gather here to discuss and decide on matters that affect the well-being of our city and its residents. Help us to listen with respect and speak with honesty and act with integrity. Grant us wisdom, courage, compassion to address the challenges and opportunity that lie ahead. May we always seek your will and work with your glory. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Michael, if you'll please do the roll call.
All right, Madam Mayor. Councilman Lloyd has asked to be excused. Councilman Schleck?
Present.
Councilman Barr?
Present.
Councilman Marcos has asked to be excused. Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Madam Protemnit?
Here.
Treasurer Armstrong? S. Tyler?
Present.
Almost 20 years of doing it, I apologize.
Thanks, James.
And then Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here, thank you.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Corrections or changes?
Corrections, Mayor.
Going to make a change, is that correct?
Correct. I would like to change Resolution 3 to read Resolution to authorize the City Administrator's Office to purchase and place our POW MI flag beneath the American flag at Brand Park Vietnam Veterans and Beyond Memorial and remove the language "raise a Space Force flag."
Okay, just to clarify, that is to purchase a Space Force flag?
Correct, yes.
We already have the POW.
Correct.
So, we'll read Resolution to authorize the City Administrator's Office to purchase a Space Force flag for the Brand Park Vietnam Veterans Memorial, is that correct?
So, we're taking out the POW, all that?
Yeah.
Yes, the raising. So, it's to purchase Space Force flag for the Brand Park Vietnam Veterans and Beyond Memorial. So, it's shortened up. Those who made the motion, comfortable with that?
Comfortable.
Mr. Valerius?
Yes.
Ms. Nick? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That has passed. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January 23?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Now we come to organizational business and first will be Mr. Mizzi.
All right, Mayor and Council. As you know, we adopted the council meeting dates back in November, December of last year. However, just to be safe, we didn't put a location, so I just ask us for a resolution to officially notify and post notice that the council meeting will be held at the DPS Building at 24 West Outer Drive.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, February 20.
May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has carried. City Treasurer, Mr. Estheimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you have a resolution, Festivity Commission is street fair cash handling policy. Recently I was requested to get involved with the cash handling procedures with the street fair with that festivities commission. So, I saw input from our city administrator, from our finance director and other communities just to see exactly how others are doing that. And that's what's before you now. Basically with this process, the city treasurer along with some members from festivities and otherwise will count the cash together. Here at City Hall, we'll stay here for safekeeping. But that was the essence of what this specific resolution is all about. It's just was adopted at their specific meeting on February 8th and I'm just asking you to make it a, grant this resolution tonight so it becomes part of our policies going forward.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution has passed, thank you. Now we come to the Administrator's Report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a few quick updates. Looking like we're going to have a very busy weekend here at the ice arena with the holiday tournaments for the President's Day holiday weekend. A number of games are being played there and I know we're also hosting the high school regionals, but I'll have more notice on that for next week with the actual game times and I think teams as well. But I do believe Allen Park will be playing on that Saturday night, which will be March 2nd?
February 24th.
February 24th.
Seven.
Half a week. And I believe they'll be playing at that Saturday night game, the seven hot game, but I'll have more information on that as we get closer. Just an update on the fire department staff, they've recently completed or will complete the following training. Firefighter Derek Lynn and firefighter Trent Olson, ice and water rescue funded, that was free because it was funded by the state of Michigan. Engineer Ryan Croft, tactics for first new engines was also funded by the state. Engineer Michael Estrada and Sergeant Derek Spencer, DMA special teams drone pilot. This was a new program under the Downriver Mutual Aid Logistics Team and so we appreciate being involved in that. You know Chief Egan has mentioned a number of times, as Chief O'Reilly has mentioned and he's not here, but Deputy Chief Taylor, very involved in Downriver Mutual Aid and many different aspects. And then Chief O'Reilly and Lieutenant Jim Colas will be attending the fire inspector conference up at Mount Pleasant from April 8th through April 11th. This conference is required for them to maintain their fire inspector license. And then just another reminder, we will be closed next Monday, February 19th for President's Day.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept and file the Administrator's Report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by two people to my right. Mr. Schleck, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments. You may come up and speak for, you have four minutes. All we want is your name and the street on which you live, please do not give us your full address.
Good evening, Mayor McLeod, City Council. With heavy heart, I'm here to go ahead and inform the citizens of this great city that we have lost a very special man, a friend to us, a friend to all of us, and a great friend to me. We lost Dennis Hayes this past Monday on February 6th. He passed away on his birthday of 73 years old. He left a wife of 48 years and a son and his great that he really felt that Dennis really lived for, for his granddaughter Polly and his dog Roxy. They used to come to my, they used to take walks around the park, used to go ahead and take walks around the neighborhood and they always used to stop at my house. And I would give Dennis a cup of tea, he would give me a call and says, hey Ray, I'm on my way. And I'd give the dog a little biscuit, but you know what? He was a city councilman also. He was a grand marshal for the city of Detroit, for the Irish. He was involved in many, many things. We're going to miss him. But one thing we have, we have his memories, I have his memories. I can see him sitting right there, ready to get up here and say a couple of words. Maybe he was a little hard on him like I am, but you know what? We came here, we were involved. So, at that time and because of that, let's just bow our heads for just a little bit of silence and remember him and remember all our friends who have passed on and even some of our relatives and our moms and dads. So, let's just bow our heads just for a couple of seconds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
It's an interesting work session meeting that just happened because there was so much I'm like, want to say or speak or say something. The flags at the park. Being on the community affairs group with Councilman Valerius and Tony Lawley, we had our meetings and it was, it's the American Legion that came to us about those flags and this whole memorial Vietnam and beyond. So, I do agree that they should have, someone in that group should have a key for those flags so they can take care of it, just like the mayor said that so that this council is not, it's our park, but it's their project, just like the one at the Champagne Park on the corner. We just guided them because it's in the city. Again, if you are not, it's okay to vote no if you don't agree with something 100%. It's okay, it's fine. And then to Ray, I just brought back memories that I encourage residents to come up here, I encourage residents to just come to meetings because I've been coming here to say council meetings all these years and seeing people, it's like come and go and stuff and bring memories and stuff and all. It's, I always say, and our clerk can say, the regulars that just always come up and speak and stuff and it's just seems like less and less over the years. So, I encourage especially the younger residents that are here for government class, I did when I was in high school, please keep supporting your city, your local businesses. When this year it's the presidential election, honestly the most important is your local government because they are the ones, the representatives right here. So, I encourage everyone in the city of Allen Park, there's over 20, over 28,000 residents and they should come up and speak and if they have an issue to talk to your representatives or email. Because I know the little four years I was on, I would say maybe 10, I got maybe 10 emails from residents and stuff at most, but so again, I come up here to encourage residents to come up and speak to their representatives. And again, it's okay to you guys that if you don't 100% agree something, it's okay to vote no, but make sure you read your packets, make sure you ask questions as much as you can. And with that, Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. God bless and stay positive.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administrators. My name is Anne Zagunis Anoceanah. I'm a lifelong resident of Allen Park. I'm also have the privilege of being a commissioner on the Parks and Rec Commission. When I seen the resolution about the parking lot and the possible reconstruction asphalt paving of Champagne Park and some other things that are mentioned here, I was ecstatic as a lot of us probably are. I'm just going to touch on a couple of points here and all of us who've been in this city, that park was always used as a focal point and now with the school all done and all the shining of everything else, the only thing that's missing is our, is our parking lot. And not only is that parking lot used to park, we used to use it for events in Allen Park. We had many events, we had many gatherings. So, it's very important that we consider that. We need it for ADA compliance, we need it for safety for our citizens and visitors that walk through, whether you have a stroller or whether you walk out your car. I don't know how many of you have been in the parking lot lately, but I can tell you over the years it has deteriorated. And I just wanted to make sure that when it is talked about and considered, it is a very important part of Allen Park. Champagne Park, that parking lot, not only is it important for safety, it's just important for, I picture Champagne Park as still being one of the finest areas of our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Kittle, Hanford Street. I'm going to be rattling off awfully fast because I have to get everything in within four minutes. Please don't believe I'm the grim reaper because after you hear this, you're going to think I'm the number one enemy and I'm not. Bear with me. The glossary of election terminology of U.S. Election Assistance Commission, definition of a city, an incorporation of local government body within the state, definition of a city general municipal election, irregular election of candidates and measures within the city, definition of an election, a formal process of selection of a person from public office or an exception or rejection of public population voting. In our city charter, Article 7, Section 702, filing vacancies, Sub D, if a vacancy occurs in the city of officers, clerk or treasurer, the council shall seek within 60 days of vacancy, select a qualified person to serve on the successor can be elected. E, a person appointed to the office of the councilman, clerk or treasurer shall serve until city election held at such a time after the creation of the vacancy that is possible to circulate petitions to be placed on a ballot as a candidate for office. Section 7, 4, officers' commissions, restrictions exempt otherwise specifically provided in the charter, no elected officer shall hold any office except that to which he she was elected or perform any service for the city, the compensation for which is paid out of the city funds, or shall any member of the council be elected or appointed to any office created by council while they were a member therefore until expiration of one year from the date when they were ceased to be a member of the council.
Point of order, Mayor. I believe that's a newly created position if you read the charter.
It doesn't say newly created. I read it, please let me finish and then you can come back. When the reading of the definition of the section of the charter sitting in Allen Park, I as a resident of the city, place a mayor and council in the city of Allen Park, notice the following charter violations and possible violations to come. These violations as noted needed to be rectified immediately. An elected officer, city councilperson stepped down from his position on January 9th, 2024 and was granted the position of city treasurer without the completion of the year restriction as stated. The person can no longer sit as a treasurer and must be replaced. Sadly, since the person stepped down from what seems not to be referring to the council rules, he cannot take his seat back on the council. The original treasurer stepped down in mid-December and the city failed to post and notify the residents that open seat to be elected to primary ballot of August 6th, 2024. And as of January 29th, the councilperson stepped down from their elected seat and the city has failed to post and notify the residents that open seat to election of the primary ballot of August 6th. In order for the, in order for the city and the chart, in order to, in order to not be in violation of charter for replacement of these two seats and on the next election, a posting needs to be made on the city site in the city hall by tomorrow, February 14th in order to be complying to the state that the 90 days be given to the signatures to be placed on the primary election being held in the city on August 6th. The closing date to be placed on this ballot is 12 Tuesdays prior to the election, which will bring the date to May 13th, one day before 12 Tuesdays in the election. Fire for the city to comply with the following placing them in a violation to the charter and report to be filed with the state of Michigan in doing so. Therefore, I would suggest that the first thing in the morning, if not able to do tonight, the city clerk updates the adequate city, antiquated city website with this information and post a notice in the port in City Hall. I do have copies if everybody wants to see what I just wrote. I also would like to say I would appreciate if we would start having complete minutes. When you have your minutes, you have to put down everybody who's come up and talked and what they talked about.
Point of order. No, I do not, ma'am. That is not Robert's rules. And it says right here, and I don't want to fight with you, I just don't like people misquoting our charter.
I didn't misquote, I read the whole thing. It's online. I let you guys.
It says, nor shall any member of the council be elected or appointed to any office created. Here we go into interpretation. This was discussed several times in the past. They did not create a position like assistant administrator and put him in there. That's the intent of it. I was at the Charter Commission meeting in 98 when they discussed that.
You can.
I'm sorry, your time is up. You can discuss that further with the city clerk.
I'm not arguing. I do have good points, but I just know that section applies to them creating a new position and then putting their buddy in there. That's what that's for.
I understand, but that's not how it reads and you're still in violation.
I'm sorry.
Of the election.
We're not debating here. The clerk is, from his position and his experience is telling you what his interpretation. If you want, discuss it with him further.
No, 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 I understand, but you need to address the fact of the election and you've only got till tomorrow to post it and why it has not been posted.
That is up to the clerk's, ma'am, that is up to the clerk's office. Your time is up, please.
I mean, I'm sorry, what do you mean it's up to the clerk's office?
It is not up to me.
I need to understand that.
I'm sorry, your time is up. He's tried to explain.
I'm not debating you, I'm just.
No, 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 I'm not debating. I just need to know whether you're going to post the open.
Point of order, Mayor, point of order.
Please, your time is up and we are not here to argue or debate, please.
It's okay. I just wanted to know because I have to file with the state tomorrow that you failed to go with the charter, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, I have no debate with her. I just know the language that she quoted, that one bit for the record is for newly created positions. That's the only part of what she says I have any issue with. And I also don't have the right to interpret the charter, I'm not the attorney, but that's when an attorney told me to, so that's the only part I'm worried about.
Hello, my name is Leah Holman on Philamine Street. I have been a resident on and off of Allen Park for 50 years. I currently live in the house that my parents had, so I am extremely familiar with the city. I am very familiar with how safe I feel in this city or have been up until the past two and a half years. On Philamine, we have a house right across the street from me that has been a nuisance house since the day they moved in. Our amazing police officers have been to this house approximately 100 times. Most recently, two nights ago, after the Super Bowl, this house had a party and a huge fight broke out. Seven people fought in the middle of Philamine Street. They brought the fight onto my house, onto my, or I'm sorry, onto my property, up on my porch, weapons were there, they were threatening to shoot each other, they were threatening to, and I quote, blow this bitch up. After speaking with the police officers who once again are amazing, have been, every time we have called about this house, they respond, they, and not to say that they're sick of coming because of course it's their job and they will definitely respond anytime, but they have advised us on Philamine Street to request that the city of Allen Park get a nuisance ordinance law, I believe is the terminology. Many cities in the Downriver area have this law, Allen Park does not. If a law is created here in Allen Park, then we can, or the city, the police can ticket these people when there is a nuisance, when there's a situation like that has happened. But we need something to happen on Philamine Street. I have children, we no longer feel safe. When weapons were drawn the other night, my children had to run to the basement because they were afraid of a stray bullet. We, ironically, my, we do use out of districts going, my kids go to Trenton High School and if you're not aware, they had to have a lockdown because of the bullet that was found. And this came right on the heels of that and my children have been extremely upset. So, my kids cannot even go outside now and toss a football because we're afraid that this gang activity that they have brought to our city is going to get worse. There's been shots fired in the past of people driving by, shooting at each other at the house. The people that live there had tried, have tried running each other over. There are three small children that live in this house. They are raising and breeding pit bulls. It is not a safe environment for any of the citizens, especially kids that live on Philamine Street. So, again, I urge you guys to consider having a nuisance law so this issue can be handled and the police or whoever can start ticketing, fining and maybe these people will either clean up or get out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Greg. I live also on Philamine Street.
Greg, what is your last name, please?
Sainz, S.A.N.Z. I also live on Philamine Street and unfortunately, I'm the neighbor next to the troubled house. Many years ago, as all of you can remember, when we were children and we had a problem with the neighbor, we'd go over there, we'd talk with them, we offer him coffee and Entom and cake, something to keep the peace. We have attempted that and we've been successful in talking to the husband that lives there, kind of have an opinion that his wife maybe is at the core of all the problems. In any event, what I'd like to talk to you about, I'm not appealing to you as a government, I'm appealing to you as a parent. Can you understand this woman's agony that her children were sent home from school because a bullet was found? And then they come home and a couple of days later, their shocks ringing out and they're petrified, they have to go down the basement because they're scared. How would any of you feel if that was your house? If that happened in your neighborhood? I've called the city many of times. In one breath, I've been told by the police department, all you can do is make the report. We've called the owners of the home, the property management, all we can do is make the report. I'm not saying to gather them up in a posse and head them and run them out of town because I do understand the double edged sword. One, I'm not trying to violate their right to live there. Yes, they do have a right. As I said, when we were younger, when the hit the fan, one of our parents would say, it's time to move. But we've been cemented in that neighborhood. Leah's two generations. I've been there 27 years and I've never experienced anything like that. All I can ask is please support what Leah is asking. Think about putting ourselves in a preventative mood rather than a responded mood and let's learn what happened at Oxford so nothing will come about that we can say we failed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's no further people coming forward, we will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of purchasing actions, claims and accounts in the payroll report and financial actions, which is the financial review, budget to actual report, balance sheet and cash flow. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Come to our first resolution to adopt the updated Allen Park Emergency Operations Program Local Community Support Plan and authorize Mayor Gail McLeod to sign the certification form on behalf of the city of Allen Park. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. Comments or questions?
To give a brief update of what this is here. The Emergency Operational Program Local Community Support Plan is a document that we work with Wayne County Emergency Management, they have this on file. They have this on file, and it just steps out the operations of how, who's in charge of various aspects of the emergency, who they'll contact, Wayne County Emergency Management staff will contact. If it's a police aspect, it's going to be Chief Egan, and then there's also any of his people below that would be in line if he's not available. For the Friday Department, it'd be Chief O'Reilly, Deputy Chief Taylor, and then maybe list a captain at that point. So as we were going through with everything, the changes we've had with the new, with the election in November, but we also had the chiefs come on board in September, so just to make sure we get it all updated so we can send this over to Wayne County.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is carried. Resolution two is to re-adopt the city of Allen Park Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan with the four changes, complaint procedures, organizational chart to 2024, updated population for the 2020 census, and updated table number one, language spoken at home to the 2022 American Fact Finder data, and authorize Mayor Gail McLeod to sign the document on behalf of the city. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any comments or questions?
Let me through the chair.
Yes.
The, I'm not going to reread the resolution because that is all the changes that were listed, but this came about because we were needing to update the complaint procedures. This document is required by AMDAT in order for us to be able to continue receiving our Act $51 road money, and we'll make those changes and then send it up to AMDAT for approval.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is carried. Resolution three, to authorize the city administrator's office to purchase a Space Force flag for the Brand Park Vietnam Veterans and Beyond Memorial. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution to award the reconstruction and asphalt paving of the Champagne Park parking lot and construction of an eight-by-six by seven-hundred-and-thirty-five-foot asphalt pathway from the parking lot to the Allen Park High School football field to Savone Cement, our current contractor, for a total cost of $447,947.50. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. We'd like some clarification.
Yeah, so this project here has been a request from the Parks and Rec Commission. I know it's been on the radar for the council, this current council, previous council, and probably many previous councils before that. This is the project that Ms. Segunis, Ms. Segunis was just mentioning during non-ice participation. High need, especially from the ADA aspect. We were looking, been looking at this project for a number of years internally. We meet on a regular basis with the engineers' office, have discussions. This is one of the projects that we discuss, and we've come, moved from a potential of multimillion-dollar project upwards of close to $2 million for this because of the way we would have to store the stormwater. So subsequently, we've been able to find, as we've gone through time, working together, doing some research, onsite research with the, through the DPS, able to find that there is actually a drain there that is connected to Champagne Road, and that will allow the drainage for the parking lot to occur without having to incur massive cost for underground storage. Typically, when I talk about underground storage would be when they were building the hotels, they basically dig a big basement in the parking lot, they put in the covert, upside-down culverts, they retain the water there for a period of time, and they would release it over to the drain on Pelham Road. We will not need to do that now. So this will, this saves a significant amount of money. There was a question earlier, and I don't want to jump on anybody's, council may ask this question, but there was a question about concrete earlier, just not really feasible to make this project work at this time, to do concrete. It would be probably twice as much as we've got listed here.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
One no vote. Resolution is approved. Resolution five, to approve the IGA, which I believe is the Intergovernmental Association Act with Wayne County for improvements to Champagne Park and accept the $58,500 from the Wayne County Parks Millage Allotment to enhance Diamonds Two and Three at Champagne Park. Motion.
Motion.
Motion. I have a duet going over here. Mr. Valerius and Ms. Nick. That would be a motion and a second. Any clarification on this? The grant from one of our Wayne County Commissioners, I believe, Mr. Palomaro, and.
So if I may through the chair, the $58,000 comes from the park militia, which is on your taxes. So this is a portion that comes back to each community through your county commissioners, and in this case, it'll be for $58,500. The project is, I think it was listed there, is to redo the infills at Diamonds Two and Three at Champagne Park. Since we're kind of at a pace here to improve Champagne Park, which is desperately needed, so just your tax dollars coming back to help the community, your county tax dollars coming back to help the community.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution six, to ratify the action of the city administrator's office for the submission of an application to the state of Michigan's Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle, community technical, managerial, and financial support for the lead line replacement grant program in the amount of $500,000 with no match required. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr.
Apologize, I get jealous of the, with Tom Murray comes up here, he takes the whole podium for the evening, so I figured I'd do it myself. This here is an application that was submitted by Rains, C. Rains, Ohio Sebeck is our city engineer, and Tom Murray, DPS director, to the Eagle, which is the state of Michigan. Do we read out what that is, what Eagle stands for? Eagle is the Environmental.
Great Lakes and Energy.
Great Lakes and Energy Commission. So in this case here, we've been bringing the grant applications to the council for approval, and this one, it was submitted, and I want to make sure we have you aware of it from the council perspective to know that what we're doing on these, and that's why I'm asking you to ratify this action. This is one of those that is $500,000 with absolutely no match. Love that kind of a grant, and we can find more of them. In this, in this process here, they'll be looking for lead service lines by basically using the term potholing. They'll go through and they use hydro excavation to drill on either side of the water shut-off in the front yard. They'll be able to determine what component the material is from the shut-off valve going towards the meter, towards the house, which would lead, if it's a lead or copper at that point, they'll be able to then know if it needs to be replaced for future replacement through another program that we've been requesting grant funding for as well. So this is all, these programs here really go back to Flint and the debacle up in Flint with the water, and this is to try to get the leads out of those, lead services out and make houses safer.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution seven, to concur with the recommendation of the festivities commission and approve the expenditure for forty-five block, forty-five MOS package, forty-five Blackhawk holsters, forty-five Streamlight Tactical Gun Mount Light, five Mossberg twelve-gauge shotguns, and two Hobe Mossberg 500 less lethal orange, at a total cost not to exceed $59,037.80 from CMP Distributors Incorporated. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Barr.
If I, I know the chief is going to speak on this as well, I just want to kind of give a little bit of backstory of what, why there was a delay. This was actually approved by the festivities commission back in November. There was, I had some questions and concerns regarding the actual resolution. In the minutes, they were lacking a date, and they were lacking the information for the, for the purchase. I worked with the chairman, who is actually here, Mr. Wallidora, and at the last meeting, they were able to make those corrections. We were in, bringing it forth. I had a meeting with the chief Egan to kind of go over what the project was. There was a lot of questions. I knew Councilman Marcos had asked a question at a previous study session regarding the funding and whether there could be other uses, other funds used for this purchase. We sat down, myself and Finance Director Works, with Chief Egan, and we went over those. When we do the budget, which we're currently in, we have, you know, numbers in mind of what we're going to be able to spend, they also get quickly spent with other projects. With the drug forfeiture, there's really no outline, you know, there is, as the fund comes available, there's not a sure-all that they're going to have funding available, but as it becomes available, when you have special projects we need to take, use those funds for. In the case here, the money from forfeiture had already been earmarked for the new police cars that the city ordered back in.
Two years ago.
It's a couple of years ago, yeah. And they, those have come in from delivery, they're now being outfitted, and that's about $20,000 apiece, so that's $80,000 for those. So all of a sudden, if there's $100,000 seeing that funding quickly depleted, I know the chief is also working to purchase some tasers through the grant from the DCC, and if you recall at the last meeting, if that's short, that money's going to come from drug forfeiture as well. So that's just kind of give a backstory of where we're at, timed late, and then clarifying why drug forfeiture would not be the right, would cannot be a use because we don't have the funding available this time in that headboard.
Yeah, just first, a point of clarification. I know there's a whole lot of 45s being thrown around in there. These are actually a nine-millimeter handgun, which is the common gun that's currently for law enforcement. We have a lot of smaller hands gripping guns, whether it be females or smaller-framed officers, so the sigs are a little big and bulky. Our SIG handguns are out of service, they're not, they're out of warranty. We still have them, and when we did our budget four years ago, we tried to look at wants and needs, and this was down. We needed cars, we needed equipment, we needed computers. We've gotten all those things over the years, so that's where we're at now. I'd be remiss, not to mention today is the one-year anniversary of the Michigan State University shooting, so absolutely, Georgia, we left. They should not have to put up with that. I did read that report. Our officers are very aggressive with handling people that need to go to jail, and we've had almost three hundred people get arrested last year, so almost one a day. If they were able to get there in time and witnessing that they could arrest, they would have. Our officers are aware of the situation. More patrols and things like that will happen. Either you're going to comply, or you're going to leave our city. We're not going to allow that kind of stuff happen. So yeah, that's what this is. It does take a lot for me to wear green and white, but I did do it today for MSU. So part of our, our five goals, one of them is using technology to be a force multiplier and keep our schools and our residents safe. So I have Sergeant Seagres, who's our, weighs, knows way more about guns than I do. I'm not a gun guy, but we did put MOSs, miniature optic systems, or what you saw, read that. I know a lot of you are aware of those. As soon as we put those on our rifles, I know my shooting improved. When I was in Detroit, I had a Glock, I shot better with a Glock than a Sig. This is trying to take the current technology to make our officers more proficient, so God forbid we have to go into a school. We want to be able to stop the threat as soon as possible and not hopefully hurt somebody else. That's really what it comes down to. So that's our goal with that. I appreciate festivities committee, they always step up for us. I understand the issues that come with it. The other thing is, technology's changed with shotguns, and so the less-than-lethal cartridges that we're going to, the beanbag rounds, if you were in three feet, a lot of times you go in a house and someone comes out with a knife, the whole purpose is not to have to kill somebody. And if you shot somebody back then with the beanbag rounds, it could separate your aorta, and to me is not less-than-lethal. So literally, it's a little ball that comes out, and very shortly, these will have like the pepper spray in them, like we used to carry on our belts, where if it hits, it will go, so now an officer doesn't have to get close. Hopefully lowers our workers' comps, our injuries, and our use-of-force cases, so.
It's my understanding that, so this, the, like the red dot system and this, that doesn't work with our current firearms, correct?
Correct.
We need to get the Glock for that to work as well.
Correct. We would need to purchase new weapons to put these on there. If we're going to purchase new weapons, we'd like to get the ones that are standard in the industry and have those hopefully for quite a long time. It is the latest technology, so yeah. Sergeant Seagres could explain that better, but shaving off the, the slides would make them not operable. They're not already out of warranty, but yeah, that's the reason why.
And you also mentioned the fit of the hand, and I know that we're getting more female officers, and I saw the new recruits, and not everybody's six foot three and.
Not just, not just Jaden. Jaden's a lieutenant in the academy right now, Saint Andre's doing fabulous, but our officers aren't six foot four like that. I wouldn't have been able to be a state trooper when I wanted to start, so as much as I try to be over six foot, I'm not. So yeah, that is, that is the standard. It went from the 45s to 10s, all this stuff. They've kind of settled on a nine millimeter is what is needed. It's the least expensive for ammo costs and is more, more efficient. So, any other questions?
Sergeant Seagres does not fit that criteria.
I know, I know.
He's the AMDAT.
I know. I'll drink water, I know.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Resolution eight, to authorize Mayor Gail McLeod to sign the fiscal year 24 state earmark contract 24-5049 for Pinecrest Drive on behalf of the city of Allen Park. Motion. Motion. Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr.
Council, this here is a, we were able to receive through the efforts of Senator Erica Geis and Representative Tulio Liberati in Public Act 119 of 2023, which is the budget, an earmark for $1.6 million that'll be used for Pinecrest Boulevard, I'm sorry, Pinecrest Drive to be repaved. I think they're also going to have some new concrete curbing, and this will include all the crossovers as well. I think there's seven crossovers, and this is between, Pinecrest Drive between Southfield Road and Pelham Road.
And this is a formality that's involved in accepting this budget from the state.
I do apologize, yes it is.
They give it to you, but then they want to confirm that you are accepting it and that they are giving it to you, so.
Yeah, they also outlined the delivery of those funds. I believe it'll be $100,000 upfront, and then there's $100,000 in that we have to submit application. We're going to be over that. The project is out to bid right now. It is due back on the twenty, open on the 22nd. We'll be bringing it to council for award on the 12th of March, and then as we, there'll be bidding or bonding and insurance, probably take another month, so we're probably looking at sometime in, end of April, early May before this project would be ready to go. As we mentioned, we do on the other projects, we will pass out a flyer to all the residents in the neighborhood, explaining what the process will be for trash collection and so
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution nine, to award the lift station generator bid to Haddix Electric, local bid 5% at a cost of $100,745 with funds from account 401-000985450. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Heard the baritone first. Mr. Murray?
I can speak on it, or we can have Mark, since he's enjoying this evening.
You've been waiting to hear you talk.
So this is in regards to the three current generators that we have waiting to arrive for them lift stations. They should be arriving here around end of March. That's the latest we have. We ordered them about a year and a half ago. We needed to bid this out to have them installed, so when they come, we can have them installed. Mr. Haddix was not the lowest bid. He was the third lowest bid, but it is up to the council if they would like to award it to Mr. Haddix according to the ordinance we have, because he falls within the 5% of the lowest bid. So I'm recommending Mr. Haddix's company, Haddix Electric, due to he does a lot of work in the city now. He currently does a lot of work on them lift stations for any electrical issues. He also has contract with DDA for their lighting and many other things throughout the city. Yes, he is an Allen Park resident, no, he's not an Allen Park resident anymore. He's an Allen Park business.
Correct. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution ten, to approve Kennedy Industries' current contractor to repair a flight pump at the Lowe's sanitary lift station in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray.
Hello again. This is, uh, another pump we have, this one is at the Lowe's lift station from when they built Independent Marketplace and Fairland Green. This services that area for all those commercial businesses. We have two pumps in that lift station, this one failed, it locked up. We had Kennedy Industries pull it out, break it down, tell us what it needed, if we needed a new one or rebuilt. They said it could be rebuilt for the price you see before you, or we could have purchased a new one for about a fifteen thousand dollars more. This pump's about five years old, this would be its first rebuild. It's very common to have pumps in this industry rebuilt at least once before you buy another pump. And by the way, Flight, I'm sorry, Flight is also, Kennedy Industries is the only in, um, company in the state of Michigan that sells Flight, so they therefore also have the parts for this pump to be rebuilt.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, resolution is approved, thank you. We'll now come to council comments, and tonight, we will start with Mr. Lloyd.
All right, uh, fortunately for everybody, I have to excuse myself out of here to be on a Zoom call at seven o'clock, so I have limited time. For the students in the class, the room that usually turn in agendas to me, Mr. Valerius is gonna be collecting them for you, all right? So I'll make sure you guys get your credit. So first off, I wanna, um, s- speak to, uh, Ms. Holman. I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a teacher, um, I've been in those lockdowns, they're, they're terrifying. And I, I, I have also, I've born and raised in this city, I have a one-year-old at home, and I'm so sorry that you've gone through that. We are, right now, getting our first, um, Legal Affairs, uh, committee meeting for this council together, coming up at the end of this month, and I promise that'll be the first thing that we consider on that agenda. I, I very much appreciate you bringing that to us, um, if it wasn't for that, that speaks to the importance of coming to these council meetings. Because, you know, we all live on our own streets, and we talk to our neighbors and have those experiences, so it's so important that you bring those to us. So, thank you so much, um, it'll be one of, it'll be the, the first thing that's up on our agenda to consider that. Obviously, we'll invite Chief Egan, you're more than welcome to join us and share your experience. Sounds like the Chief has, um, can give us some insights into that, um, but, but thank you. I, I wish I had more, more time to address this next issue, because, um, I, I'm, I wanna speak from the heart and talk about my experiences. I, for the last four years, I, I've, I've sat up here and talked about how important democracy has been to me, and like how that is something that is almost like, growing up in my household, my dad was a government teacher, that, that was religion in my house. Like, the, the fact that the importance of, of democracy, and that is what runs your, your city, and that is the biggest impact that you have on your government, is, is something that is, um, again, I, I learned it, like, learning to look both ways before I cross the street, it's core to me. And so I, I have very conflicted feelings, it's a difficult thing for me when I got this position, because I lost this last election. I, I was a writing candidate, I put my best effort in, I, I tried, and I came up short, and I was not selected to be up here by the citizens of Allen Park. So, it's almost as if I have a feeling of guilt, despite the fact that I had done nothing wrong. Maybe that has my time at St. Cyril's growing up, I'm not sure. But I will tell you this, um, I have absolute faith in our clerk, in our city attorney. Um, I've had the chance to work with him for the past four years, and, um, Joe, Mr. Kovier is nothing if not prudent, all right? He's very careful in his considerations, and I would be, I would be shocked if he let us down a road that was something that was in violation of our charter, or put us into sort of any sort of, of jeopardy. One thing that I, I have, I, I would be remiss if I did not mention this before I, before I leave here, and again, I'll have to excuse myself after my comments, is my appreciation to Mr. Estimer. I, I put forth that, the, the, the city, um, the charter amendment to make that a private position. The citizens of Allen Park rejected it, they said that they want that to be an elected official. And part of that aspect, in doing that research, is how crucial that job is. The treasurer of the city is the keeper of the cash, they're the person that making sure that the money that you pay in your taxes is getting to the place that it is supposed to be, and Mr. Estimer, since he has had this position, has worked tirelessly for the citizens of Allen Park to make sure that you are served and that you are taken care of. He is sitting in that office, if you have a complaint with how the treasurer's office is run, I encourage you. He has office hours, go and tell him. And so I firmly believe, I know that there is anger, and I think that there is a, a, a place for that anger to be put, but I do not think that it belongs for Ms., Mr. Estimer, because I truly think that, that what he decided to do was to serve this city in what he felt was his best capacity. And for that, as an Allen Parker, as a resident of this city, I am very appreciative of him. I, um, Miss Kittle, did I get? Kittle, thank you so much. I very much appreciate you giving this me, I've, I'm not much of an auditory learner, I'm more of a visual. So I promise you, I will, um, take the time to look over this, um, and I will, I will obviously speak to Mr. Kovier, and I'm, I'm assuming that we're gonna be seeing you more. No, 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 absolutely not, and I did not, and I didn't ta- and I, yes. Absolutely, and I, and you know what, and I appreciate you as a citizen of Allen Park, yeah, I know. Seven fifty-seven, coming and bringing this to me, but I just, I, I wanted to, last time I sat up here, I did not say that appreciation for Mr. Estimer, so I just wanted to share that, and I appreciate you bringing it to, um, our attention. Thank you all so much, I appreciate you, guys have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
All right, mine's gonna be short and sweet. Um, I just want to, um, congratulate Gus and Us, which is a restaurant up on the hill. Um, they celebrated their eleven years, um, this month, um, so congratulations to them. And my prayers and thoughts go out to Dennis Hayes, um, his family for their loss, and to his friends that were left behind, so... My prayers are with them. So, everybody, tomorrow's, uh, Valentine's Day, so everybody have a nice Valentine's Day and stay safe. Thank you.
Mr. Valerius.
Uh, I keep mine short, too. Thank you, Ray, for coming up and talking about Dennis. It's kind of odd, 'cause Dennis and I kind of developed, uh, a friendship, uh, but I consider that friendship to be similar like a married couple, because we disagreed on more things than we agreed on. But the one thing that we shared was respect, uh, for each other, and respect for each other's opinions, regardless of whatever differences we had, so... But like Ray mentioned, he was definitely a true Allen Parker. His presence and voice will be missed, and my prayers go out to his family and all his friends, and obviously, he was important to you, so... Appreciate your time and sharing it with us. Uh, with that as well, uh, my wife's in Florida, so it's not gonna be much of a Valentine's Day for me, but...
You have your dog.
I'll, I'll take myself out to dinner, with that, I yield.
Mr. Barr.
To all you that came up, thank you. I have placed everything under advisement of myself, so I understand where you're coming from. Everything that's been said so far, I have to agree with you. I mean, with Dennis, you know, and everything else. Additionally, I'm gonna get back to what we really, what I, what I believe to be part of this, uh, council comments. So far, I have been, uh, a delegate to SEMCOG, I believe, and, uh, that's the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. I've already had my orientation with them. I'm also the alternate on DUO, which is the Downriver Utility Waste... Water, Wastewater, uh, Authority. Uh, I've been to a couple of those meetings, so, um, I'm learning, so please bear with me. Also, um, I was at the Historical House and, uh, noticed our American flag over there was tattered. I did end up buying a new flag, I have already hoisted it, so, um, just that's... The old one has been disposed of correctly. Other than that, Happy Valentine's Day, um, if you got your punch keys, eat them.
Mr. Schleck.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to say condolences to Mr. Hayes and his family, as all my fellow council people have mentioned. Felt that I have to address my no vote today, and even though I believe that Champagne Park is vital and very important to our community, and, um, I believe definitely it needs renovation and update, it was my opinion that this should have been looked at more further, given the fact that where the funds were coming from, and the suggested ask that more money would be coming out of, uh, the Festivities Commission. So I just feel that is why I voted no, not that I don't think that it's necessary and needs to be done, I feel that it's very necessary. I also want to thank everyone that came up and addressed issues, especially, uh, the lady about awful interaction with what happened and what has happened re-incurring, so I feel that, as a parent of two small boys, I don't know what would happen if something would happen to them, so I feel that. I also wanted to address that it is Punch Key Day, uh, I know it's kind of funny, I'm Polish among other things, and wore my lapel pin today, so I wanted to definitely shout that out. I also wanted to mention that, before we meet next, and I'm sure the clerk's going down about the presidential primary, but I also wanted to mention that I live in the north part of Allen Park, and there is going to be something on the ballot about schools, the Melvindale or the Allen Park School District, and I felt it was important to mention that this is, uh, not a new tax, and I encourage everyone to go out that lives in that part of the community to, uh, at least entertain voting for it, or at least vote against it, definitely share your opinion, and the school district's website has a lot of details on that, so please go out to that, check that out. And I know before we meet again will be President's Day, so that's important, which I'm sure, uh, clerk will talk about that coming up, as well as early voting. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, uh, that tomorrow's Valentine's Day, so I wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day, especially my sweetheart Bridget at home, taking care of those two little boys I just mentioned, I'm sure she's tearing out her hair, and when she watches this, maybe she'll smile. And with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Estimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McGus, and thank you, uh, for saving some of your comments, uh, and dedicating them to, uh, Mr. Hayes. I've grown close to Dennis over the years, uh, met him first, uh, at my business, and then, um, along the, uh, uh, various campaigns that I ran. So, um, he's a friend of mine, and, uh, I will miss him. Um, I do know that, uh, Mayor McLeod is, she'll probably speak to this, but she is, uh, working, uh, with his, uh, or with Rosita to, uh, to schedule something appropriate, uh, with the city response, but, um, I'm sure she'll mention that. All right, treasurer mode, uh, just want to remind everybody that winter property taxes are due without penalty by February fourteenth, which is tomorrow, Valentine's Day, Happy Valentine's Day, come write the city a big fat check. You, you can, that is without penalty, you know, you can pay your taxes up until, uh, February twenty-ninth this year, since it's a leap year, uh, but there is a penalty, um, that's assessed to that, that's, uh, from the county, that's directed to us to, uh, to, to give that penalty. Uh, but as of March first, we no longer can collect those, um, those payments here, they would have to be done at the county. There are several ways to pay your taxes, we put it on the website, it's been on the Facebook page, uh, but I'll just quickly review them. There's three ways, you can go to the treasurer window, uh, which is right outside here, and it says "payments" on the glass. And for those listening at home, it's one five nine one five Southfield Road. Uh, you can pay that eight-thirty to four-thirty, we have two, uh, two of the ladies that work in our, uh, finance department are working those windows the next two days, 'cause it's busy for us. You can pay by cash, check, money order, or even credit card, now there is a small fee, of course, if, if you do play, pay by credit card, but, uh, we do accept that as a payment. Uh, number two, you may use the convenient drop box that's right outside, uh, City Hall, uh, that would be for no cash, uh, just checks only, please. Uh, and then you can pay online by visiting the WWW by CityofAllenPark.org website. Uh, you look for the icon that says "pay property taxes online," and then when you click on that, again, there is a small fee for using the online, uh, portion of this payment as well. Uh, all twenty-twenty-three property taxes, summer and winter, as I mentioned, are due, uh, by February fourteenth without penalty, uh, and as I mentioned, they can be, uh, received as late as the twenty-ninth, I just want to reiterate that. And, uh, March first, all delinquent real property tax will be turned over to Wayne County. Uh, any questions, um, I'll stick around after the meeting, for those of you, um, at home that are listening, if you have any questions, you can call, um, City Hall, uh, get to the finance department or the treasurer's office, or call me directly at three one three nine two eight four three nine six, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi.
All right, I'll make this quick, 'cause I got a punch key waiting for me at home, fresh one, so... I want to remind everybody that the February twenty-seventh presidential primary is coming up, um... A lot of people have questions about, do we get new ballots, 'cause half of them are non? No, it's a presidential primary, um, it, it's, it's an odd type of election, but, um, just because people have fallen off, there's not enough time for us to mail new ballots out in any way, shape, or form. So, you do have a right up until, I believe it's Friday the sixteenth, or, I don't, to come change your ballot if you want to. However, if you haven't voted absentee, we do have nine-day early voting now in the city. And that will take place right in this room, that's why we're moving over to the DPS Center for the twentieth meeting. The nine-day early voting will take place starting Saturday, February seventeenth, and run every day until Sunday, February twenty-fifth, including President's Day, okay? But any citizen who wants to, hey, let's go early vote, and I'll do this at City Hall, City Hall is closed, okay? And the precinct workers in here will not accept your tax payment or your water bill payment. So, just remember, on President's Day, it's early voting only in here. Um, it's eight-thirty to four-thirty, and it is, the process for the voter is almost identical to the precincts, but instead of going to one, um, that you're used to, you just, there's gonna be two of them in here, one for precincts one through eight, and then one for nine through sixteen. We're not sure how we're gonna set the room up yet, but we're gonna half it off. But again, it, everything you do in the nine day would be identical to what you do at the polls, okay? You are going to put your ballot through a machine that, at the end of Election Day at eight PM, instead of having absentee ballot results and precinct results, we will now have three results that will be merged. And a lot of people have questions about that, but if you've used a computer lately, numbers crunch together very well in programs, so... And yes, those programs are very well tested, so, but I just want to assure people, what you heard on the news in other states in the past, don't believe, this, this is Michigan, they have their own laws, it's very, it's... Fifteen years ago, I would have said you were crazy, I would never do that, but with technology today, we're there. So I want the Allen Park residents to know you are safe and fine, nine-day early voting, it is exactly like voting at the polls, so, I think I did that. I got a lot of people hesitant, like, I'm not going there, but it, it is exactly the same, your vote gets counted, your, everything gets verified, and you are locked out of the system to go to the precincts to vote, okay? That's why people ask, well, why don't they do it the day before Monday? Well, Monday, you cannot get an absentee ballot, and Monday, you cannot, uh, early vote, because that will be the data collection to go onto the thumb drives that go to the precincts. So, anyone who received a ballot through the mail with absentee or came in here, it's gonna lock you out unless, you know, you can override it, knock on wood, but like, oh, that wasn't me, I don't even mind. I don't even want to bring that up, but it doesn't happen. But we're there with technology. I will get into more in-depth when August and November come up. So, because there may be some tweaking of the procedures to make it more efficient and better. So I could take up two and a half hours. I'm so sorry. I'm trying to just keep it condensed. But, um, so early voting, eight-thirty to four-thirty. If you have any questions on it, you can call our office. But if you want to double check with the state, please go here. This is the most resources you will find on elections. I could talk for ten hours. So call me, I dare you to, when I got the time. But this is a great reference. It's statewide. If you move out of Allen Park, it counts the same in the UP. So, all right, I just want to go down on Mr., touchdown on Mr. Hayes real quick. When the studios came to Allen Park, I was very hesitant. And I realized really quickly, I was one of the few, few people who was hesitant. And every time I tried to say or do something, my life at City Hall got worse and worse. Dennis Hayes was there for me when I needed him. He felt the same way I did and he's seen it. And several times, the city administration tried attacking me, setting me up and doing things. But it was Mr. Hayes, along with also Mr. Cisco, that seen right through it. So Dennis, thank you. We didn't always agree. People didn't get Dennis Hayes. If, if you know British people, like I do, like my family, you knew the way Dennis was. He was very blunt. My mother, in a Scottish accent, could insult you and praise you at the same time with an outfit you're wearing. Oh, that's beautiful. I wouldn't wear that, but that is gorgeous on you. It's amazing. I think what Dennis was missing most of the time was a British accent. So I know he rubbed a lot of people the wrong way. But his heart was there. And if it wasn't for him and a couple others, I wouldn't be sitting up here today. So, thank you, Dennis. And, um, I know there was a moment of silence, and I don't mean to be the Catholic boy, but for Dennis, he was a true Catholic. Bow your heads for one second. Eternal rest grant unto him, O Lord, and let perpetual light shine upon him. May his soul and the souls of the faithful departed rest in peace. Amen. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go on for this long. I could hear Dennis in the background saying, shut up, Ms., wrap it up. So if you have any election questions, call me, um, or go to Michigan dot gov slash vote. But other than that, um, thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you and good luck.
Thank you, Mike. Just do a little housekeeping here to reiterate that our next council meeting will be next Tuesday. We are having back-to-back because of the use of this room and the upcoming, uh, primary elections on the twenty-seventh. And it will be held at the DPS facilities on Outer Drive in their main conference room. One other thing which I have utilized and which I encourage people to do, both for paying your taxes and your water bills is to sign up for the automatic, uh, check, uh, removal. You get your statements way in advance and you know what's coming out and they come out automatically and it doesn't, uh, cost you a thing. You don't have to worry about the mail. You don't have to go out into the environment and you don't have to wait here in line.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just one thing. It takes about thirty days, so you can't come in tomorrow and sign up for that.
No.
It takes about thirty days for the process. Angela's in the back. Just make sure that I got it right so she didn't yell at me.
I, uh, I, um, appreciated Mr. McGusson coming up. I've had, um, Mr. Hayes, uh, very brief, um, statement on my desk for a while. As Ray mentioned, he died on his birthday. And, um, we had planned on lowering the flags at City Hall for him. And they are down for him and also in remembrance of the Michigan State students. There is going to be a memorial service for him on Saturday, March second, at noon at St. Francis Cabrini. He will be in-state at eleven-thirty. I would suggest to people who either knew him in, in a variety of ways to go to his Facebook page. As you read through it, you get a different, uh, tenor of the man. And I sent him a card and a letter based on some of the things I had read there, mentioning in one of them that I knew he would be very missed by his family. But I was most saddened by the fact that his granddaughter Polly would never get to know her uncle, who so obviously, obviously loved her. And if you want to see a beautiful tribute, I would encourage you, and again, you don't have to be his friend to go to his Facebook page. But I encourage you to do so because on February sixth, Rosita wrote one of the most beautiful tributes I think that you will ever read of a woman to her husband. He was many things to many people. And as many have said, they didn't always agree with him. But, um, I learned a lot about him reading through his page. And I encourage you to do the same. With regard to some of the other issues that came up and were brought to our attention, uh, they have not gone unnoticed. I know that one of our, um, neighboring cities has just gone through something very similar as far as having to fill a vacancy. And, um, we are exploring a different process that will eliminate any confusion in the future as to how things are done. This will work well, I think, for us and anyone who comes after us. Uh, again, uh, one of our neighboring communities just went through something similar. Have been kind enough to share some of their process and what they did. And I think, um, we'll set something in place and that way, we won't have to sit here or our people who come after us won't have to sit here at some point in time when they're faced with the same situation, say, what, what should we do and how should we approach it? We will have a process. With regard to the issues that were brought to our attention on Philamine, we've been doing a lot of research on that. I'm glad you have, um, brought that up. As Mr. Lloyd indicated, uh, that will be at the top of their agenda. And, um, hopefully, we can get that situation resolved. And please make sure that the police, uh, are kept apprised of what's going on there. Hate to see that in our community and we, it will get resolved. Uh, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, Happy Valentine's Day, sorry. Mr. Barr.
Motion.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. We are adjourned at seven-twenty. Thank you all.